Yep, are we off that?
Yep.
Good to go.
Okay. Welcome to the March tenth regular meeting of the Hopkins School Committee. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start tonight with recognitions, then we'll have our first opportunity for public comments, followed by reports to the school committee. For new business, we have the before and after school program, the YMCA renewal, food service management contract, also a renewal Hopkins School and High School roof designer selection, budget transfer requests, capital project article warrants, paraprofessional request, two paraprofessional requests, and the middle school stateside overnight approval. Then we'll have old business, which is school committee policy IHAMB, followed by our second opportunity for public comment, and then items by consensus. Dr. McLeod, can we start with recognitions?
We can start with recognitions. Well, I need, I guess I can pick up that one.
I don't know how far it goes.
Will this work for you so that if somebody, yes, okay. So tonight, I am delighted to recognize our middle school robotics team. And I see that many of you are here tonight, you're gonna get to come up here in front of the camera. You have some very exciting things to tell us about. About your team and the accomplishments that you have under your belts already in just your first season. We're very excited about some things that are going on, and we're actually going to ask the school committee to approve a field trip that you're gonna tell us a little bit more about. So that's why we thought it was perfect that you'd be here tonight. I'd like to introduce Doug Scott, if you could come up here, Mr. Scott. And is Amy here? Amy, could you come on up too? And Blake Dobey, could you come on up too? So, Mr. Scott is our subject matter leader for the engineering department. His responsibilities include the middle school. And he has been working this year with Amy Borges, who is our grade six through eight technology teacher here at the middle school. And they are joined by assistant coach Blake Dobey, who is a high school senior and is on the high school robotics team, correct Blake? Have you been on that for a couple of years? And has volunteered his time to help our middle school students. And we know that it's always really great for middle school students to be able to be coached by a high school student. That's always an exciting opportunity. So, I'm not gonna say any more than that, I'm gonna turn it over to your coaches and your teachers to talk about your team and what you've done, and then we're gonna call all of you up here to congratulate you, okay?
Thank you.
I'll be brief and I'll turn it over to Amy Borges in one moment. Just a quick word, just a great honor, and we thank the school committee and Dr. McLeod for having us out tonight. In its first year, the RoboHillers group of Hopkins Middle School has done a fantastic job. They received an excellence award at BU competition, and then they won the state title, and not only did they win it, but they were ranked number one at the end of the day in all categories, and received the excellence award, which is the top overall team, which includes judging categories as well as ranking for the day. Did a fantastic job. You have two very selfless people next to me. You have Amy Borges, who is an employee and teacher here at the middle school, and does a fantastic job, and she's donated her time every Thursday for two hours, plus weekend trips to competitions to help support the students. Coach Dobey approached me at the high school this year, and said that he was not able to do robotics at the high school this year. And I said, "Well, then maybe there's an opportunity to do something special this year." We're starting up a program at the middle school, which will carry up to the high school in the future. And I asked him if he was interested, and he's been here as well, at competitions as well, so. Provides his time to the kids, to the students as well. These are students that donate their time. This is their choice to do this, and they put together a great effort, as well as the parents. These are the parents that travel with the kids and support them. With that, what I'm gonna do is just turn it over to Coach Borges, and she can speak about the kids and the team.
Thank you. So, I'm so proud of all of your hard work and dedication, and it's been very exciting to be doing this with you guys. And we're all very excited to go to Kentucky. So, I'll read names of students who are participating in the team. Victoria Allen, Joe Abbott, Brandon Belmonte, Sean Cahill, Vincent Di Nicola, Nan Dixit, Jacob Dugas Costa, Nathan Foster, Liam Hartson, John Zay Khan, Josh Krimgold, Eric Litas, Aiden Moran, Hrtesh Rajanagan, Sreya Ravi, Katie Sherfius, Sankalp Subandhu, Eric Sullivan, Kevin Wang, and Grace Young.
Can you tell us a little bit about the project that won you all these accolades? Choose some of the kids, maybe?
Yeah. We've been working on building a robot for the Vex IQ challenge, which involves getting balls over like a low wall and shooting them into a basket, and knocking them off a ramp. And we get different points for those. And if we get a lot of points, we win that part. And then there's also different components, like the STEM research. We have a project for that, and...
Well, we wanna know all about that, tell us more about STEM research.
We're doing STEM research on the Big Bang, and what happened, how it was caused.
Really cool.
Yep, if somebody else wants to talk.
Yep.
We have to research the topic and then present how we... How we, like, use the information. And we present it to the judges.
So, they're judging you not only on your topic, but also on how you go about getting the answer, correct? So, why, how is it that you won the competition that you recently went to? You were first place, what made you better than everybody else? Okay, Josh.
So, we won the competition, uh, because, uh, like, in the beginning, we had this complex robot, uh, with, like, something that'd pick up the balls, and we scrapped it, we just picked it up and chucked it. We did it right in the beginning, right before we got there, we picked it up and threw, just took it off. Then, so we were left with basically just a, just a driving, just a chassis that would just... And what we did is we had it, it was really small and stable, it had a low center of gravity. So, we could simply just go onto the ramp, and you got a lot of points from knocking the balls off the ramp, and parking on the ramp. And since our robot was so small, we could, the other robot could park on too, no matter how big. So, we got like forty-six points every single time.
Wow.
We went on. So, that's how, that was our strategy.
Well, for being willing to start from nothing, right?
Mm, and make it, make it simple, make it well.
Mr. Dumas, do you have any questions about that?
I think we should hear from the young man with the hat.
Okay.
It's fun.
It's fun. What were you coaching, though? You were just helping your friend by telling him some other information about...
That the robot was called Pushbot 5000.
Push Bob.
Pushbot 5000.
Got it, cool. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to, us to know about your team, and about what you've learned being on the robotics, in the robotics club? Anybody else wants to say anything while you're on camera? Oh, Mr. Graziano has a question.
So, as mentioned earlier, we have a field trip to approve later for a competition in Kentucky. I'd love to hear more about what that is and what you're gonna be doing down there.
Competition in Kentucky is called the World Championships. Countries around the world would be coming to compete in it. And we literally do the same thing as we did in other competitions. And so, the winning team would be earning like five thousand dollars for STEM, for like next year's Vex IQ challenge. So, our goal is, ultimate goal is to try to win it, but we're also trying to gain experience from it as well.
I think that, like, it's mainly gonna be, we go there, there's lots of other countries. But, like, it's on, it's more like a field trip and a vacation. But in it, we are having a lot of fun, because we're putting in our robot, uh, to compete. So, and I think that's really gonna be cool. And it's just, uh, it's just worldwide, so.
So, I have one more question, and anybody can answer it. And the question is, what have you learned about being a member of a team?
Um, I think that being a member of a team means that, um, you have to rely on other people to get your work done. And in our team, we are all, like, divided into different parts that get different jobs done, and we all have to depend on each other. So, I, so yeah, I do the website for our team. And so, I have to rely on people like Katie over here and Sean, 'cause they do things, like they get everyone connected, and they can get like the news out if I have something to say to everyone. But then people like the build team, who actually physically built the robot, have to communicate to people like the programming team, who program the robot. And I think we've all just learned that a team is made up of individuals who have to rely on each other.
That is an excellent, excellent answer, thank you so much.
The teams that we're divided into are like positions in football or basketball.
True.
It's, you do it to help the team win.
Yep, that's a good comparison. Well, thank you, guys, we are so proud of you, that's why you're here. It's very special to be invited to a school committee meeting, because we're just really excited about everything that you're doing. But also, I've really enjoyed listening to all of you talk about what you've been learning already as being part of a team. So, it's great that you won, and, but it's also great that you're learning all these really important life lessons. So, thanks for being here. And we'll hear all about Kentucky when you get back, if the school committee approves it, we'll just have to see.
I would like to thank Alan Keller, who I don't think is here right now, but Alan, we put Alan on the spot this year. We showed up kinda late in the year and said, "Can we start a robotics club, and can we have some money?" And he was, so he was, yep. He was very strategic and did his best to put together some money to help fund the team. So, we're really thankful to Alan for taking a chance on us, so thank you.
Yes, why don't, do you want me to take it, and then he can be in it? Good luck in Kentucky! Good to get kids out here once in a while, see what this work is all about.
They're a lot more capable than I am.
That was great. Always good to hear the kids, you know, with a microphone. Yeah, yeah, kids say the darnedest things.
So, we, it's time for public comment. I don't know if there's any, anyone here that's here for public comment?
Want me to ask, want me to ask, or you just wanna move on?
We're gonna move on. Okay. So, reports to the school committee, I don't think we have anyone here from student council. Just never had so many people here. Liaison reports, are there any liaison reports?
Uh, I think we already talked about Chris Heron is a week from today, right? That's my only one.
Don't you wanna recognize girls' basketball?
Well, I'm not a liaison to it, but I certainly, I'm a little short, but, um, yeah, the girls' basketball, well, they lost last night.
But they got to the semifinals.
They got to the semifinals, and the boys' hockey team is playing as we speak in Born. I think in the semifinals also, so, yeah, sports are still continuing, the kids are doing. And I think the cheerleaders just won the state tournament as well. So, a lot of great results in our winter sports.
Okay. So, I met with the Irvine-Todaro Property Committee, or they met, we met for the first time. There are seven people on the committee, and three abutters, and then four members of other committees. And we elected a chair, which was Alton Chen, and a vice chair, which is John Catino. It was a two-hour meeting, so clearly a lot happened, I just don't, I don't have much to report, other than we elected the chair. We're going to seek input from other committees, hopefully, on what they're looking to do with the property. But that sort of, I guess, parlay's into the school committee chair report, which, where we went to the Board of Selectmen, and we presented our budget on Monday, Tuesday rather. And in that meeting, of most interest, it seemed, you know, so our operating budget, I think, was well-received, and we, it was approved, there were no outstanding questions or anything that we had to return to them with respect to information on the operating budget. They did have questions with respect to our, some capital items, and those included the bus parking lot, turf fields. And I guess there was one outstanding, just general question about getting back to them. Safety, that was a capital item, but with respect to the operating budget, they had asked Dr. McLeod to get back to them on...
Retention.
Retention for teachers who's...
Non-professional staffs.
Who have non-professional staffs. So, how long do they stay, or do they leave during that first three-year period?
It was a payroll question. It was a question that was related to the fact that we were acknowledging that the biggest, obviously, portion of our budget has to do with personnel. And so, their question around retention, how do we keep good teachers, and what are our practices around evaluation? And so, that was a question that they had asked, that we respond. May I add that they also recognized the process, and really appreciated the opportunity to be part of our meetings. And both, both of our liaison members, Mr. Mosier and Mr. Herr, commented at the thoroughness of the process, and complimented the school committee on your budget process, which resulted in them having no questions.
And with, so with respect to capital items, that they had questions on, or follow-up items. One is the turf fields, and that is, what's the planning, design process? And we, and their recommendation that they, one, would support it, and they want us to put it forward, but, two, they want it to be the football field. And so, that's something that Dr. McLeod will be investigating and working on with the team at the high school.
I have a follow-up meeting scheduled to include Gail, the AD, Mr. Mosier, has, not Mr. Mosier, Mr. Herr, as one of our liaisons, because the question came from him. In terms of why can't it be the football field, and there are some limitations around the fact that the track is there. But we do have a follow-up meeting scheduled with that group, who have been tasked with the design phase of the eventual solution. So, they wanted to know from us, what are the, what options are being considered? And so, that's what we'll, we'll have a follow-up meeting, and we'll report back to the school committee on what we find out.
And the other item was the bus parking lot, which, as the Board of Selectmen put it, I think, sort of collectively, that it's a no-brainer, the cost to put a gravel lot in, with respect to the return, we should absolutely do it. The only thing I responded with was, well, we've got this whole committee that would like to decide what to do with that property, and they did not seem to think that was a hurdle in continuing on the path forward to get the parking lot approved.
If I could just add something that's germane to that. In light of the possibility of having the new parking lot, even though we still have two years to go on the bus contract, we, those are two option years, and I think a few months ago, we had talked about maybe going back out to bid again. We're currently out to bid. The bids will open at the end of March, so at the first meeting in April, we'll have a recommendation, one way or the other. Because it'll be three years with a two-year option, that might, the timing might play better with regard to having a bus parking lot at the end of that three-year period.
So, when we did the bid, did we communicate that we had the potential of a bus parking lot, seeing what it would impact?
No, this is just, well, the way that the contract, the bid specs read, currently, the current and the new, is that in the event that we have a parking lot, that the contractor agrees to sit down and negotiate with us. But what we're really looking at is ending a bus contract, just as we have the new parking lot, so that no negotiation would be necessary, it would be factored into...
Levered in the bid.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I think that's it for the liaison report and chair report on my behalf. Do you have a superintendent report?
The only other thing I wanted to add to my report, in terms of, I guess it's another recognition, but really, it, it... I had the opportunity last night to attend the seventh-grade concert night. I saw you. And I, I was struck by three things in that, in the concert. The first was the breadth of opportunities available to our students within the music program. I was really struck, and I know that there's been tremendous support from the school committee over time for our music program, for the arts program, and for our athletic program. And one of the things that we talked about at the Board of Selectmen meeting was, you know, in terms of the budget and new initiatives, and the fact that it keeps growing, is that we, we're very proud of the opportunities in this town that we provide for kids. Here's another example of this robotics team, and we see what it brings out in students. So, the first thing was the breadth of opportunities. The second was the talent of our students. And then the third was the rate at which the teachers have been able to increase their skills. I participated in a music program all through high school, and I know what we sound like at the beginning. And what amazed me was the numbers of kids playing together and making a wonderful sound, only at seventh grade. And you see where they go to later on. But the amount of discipline that that requires is tremendous. And I, I've reached out to the directors to say all of these things directly to them, but I think that when you go to one of those concerts, and you sit back and you enjoy the music, you don't really understand what it takes to be able to have kids be able to perform at that level. And I ran into Bruce Elliott, actually, who was there, because his daughter plays trombone in the seventh-grade band. And, you know, his comment was just that she comes home and reports that the teachers are strict. And I looked at him, and I said, "Well, can you imagine being anything but?" Because you've got to have discipline, and you've got to have kids to be able to follow directions. And even that, what a wonderful opportunity, we're hearing kids talking about what it means to be part of a team. And it's the same thing as being part of an orchestra, or a band, or a chorus. It was tremendous. I was, I was so happy to be there, and so proud of the work taking place in this district in all sorts of different ways. So, that was, that was it for my, my report, other than I was gonna call out the teams, basketball and hockey and cheerleading.
Well, and I just, I'm reminded, since you said, mentioned Bruce Elliott, about the Wellness Fair, which was Saturday.
Oh, right.
And I should've mentioned that, which was really outstanding, as always. He really, he did a phenomenal job putting together a great Wellness Fair. It was really packed, and the PTA, I think, sponsors the summer camp fair at the same time. So, there was an SNAKE that was there, that was across the room from me.
Yes, I heard about that.
I stayed more closer to the Great Humdocks.
Wonder who you're spelling for?
'Cause I can't even say it. But, no, it was, it was great, the kids were having a great time, really engaged. Whitsons was there with, not Whitsons, what's our, yeah, was there with, with food, and it, they did a tremendous job. So, I wanted to make sure that we recognize them for that.
Okay, so, the first item in new business is the before and after school program of YMCA renewal. For consideration is the request and recommendation of, that the superintendent, I'm sorry, that the school committee exercises option to renew the contract with the YMCA for a second year, beginning in September of 2016. You have a motion before you, are there any comments or questions on the motion? I would seek a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to renew the contract with the YMCA for a second year, beginning in September of 2016. for a second year beginning in September of 2016.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous, and so carries.
Um, next item of new business is the food service management contract. For our consideration is the request and recommendation that the school committee exercise its option to renew the contract with Whitson's for a second year beginning in September of 2016. There is a recommended motion before you, are there any comments or questions on the motion? Okay, I would seek a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to renew the contract with Whitson's for a second year beginning in September of 2016. Motion by Ms. Knight, oh, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous, and so carries.
Can I, sorry, can I also just recognize again that how impressed I am by the partnership that Whitson's has showed, especially with recent inquiries. We noted the wellness fair, I actually saw, um, our food service director, there was a table for the folks who were building awareness about non-GMO and organic, um, lunch options. Um, and he, I saw him proactively engaging with that, um, table, and they were exchanging ideas. Um, they've just done a tremendous job in communicating with the community, especially around this issue, and being creative and trying to see what they can do. So I'm I'm more than happy to renew this contract, because I think it's been very impressive.
And the good ketchup came back.
It did?
See, their customer service is outstanding.
My daughter was like, I'm taking credit for that. There you go, this night, you can't take credit.
All those nights when you're out and I wonder why, the good ketchup came back.
Just to get the ketchup.
Next up is the Hopkins School and High School Roof Designer Selection. Um, for our consideration is the request and recommendation that the school committee award the contract to Gale Associates of Weymouth and authorize the administration to sign a contract in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars. There is a motion before you, are there any comments or questions on the motion? Okay, I would seek a motion to award the contract and authorize the administration to take the appropriate steps to sign a contract with Gale Associates of Weymouth in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous, and so carries. Okay, for consideration, um, next are the budget transfers. The request and recommendation that the school committee approve the budget transfers as outlined in the documentation. Um, do you, sorry, I was moving. Um, there's recommended motion before you, does anyone have any comments or questions on the motion? And does anyone want to speak in detail about the budget transfers?
Do you want to provide any background, Mr. Dumas?
There's no questions, hang on. We are, we are soon sailing. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I I think it's self-explanatory.
Did you, did you receive any questions that you want to address for the whole committee or? Okay.
It's worth noting again, I mean, we talk about this a lot at
Well, sorry, there was one.
But the, um, but this this again reflects that the extreme budget driver that we have every year in terms of of special ed costs. As I went through line by line, almost all of the large-scale pluses fall into those categories. So, um, you know, as we talk about budgeting and the challenges of it, these are the great unknowns, as we'll see later in the agenda too, so. Sorry, I didn't want to break your rhythm, but
No, no, no problem. You you broke it already tonight.
I know, seriously.
So, uh, I would seek a motion to approve the budget transfers as outlined in the agenda materials.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries. Next, excuse me, item of new business is Capital Project Article Warrant Number sixteen dash zero four five in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. For our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent for payment of the invoice for a capital project invoice as appropriated in Articles fourteen F twenty-four and twenty-six. There is a motion before you, are there any comments or questions on, sorry, the recommended motion? Okay, I would seek a motion to approve the payment of warrant number sixteen dash zero four five in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to the vendor as outlined in the warrant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries. Um, next is our, for our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent for an additional one FTE paraprofessional to meet the needs of a recently registered elementary student based on the needs as dictated by that student's IEP.
Before we do the next two items, um, I just would like to add, for the benefit of the school committee, I know you keep getting these requests. And obviously, these requests first come to me. And the first thing I do is is ensure that every other possibility has been looked at in terms of staffing. But more than that, I want you to know that I'm working with Dr. Zaleski, as well as an outside consultant, who is in turn working with our team chairs, to look at how we can carefully assess the needs of our students um, in a way that will provide, we're not looking for a reduction in force. What we're looking to do is to be able to have the flexibility to provide the ser- the the support students need when they need it. And the way that we're writing, um, student paraprofessional needs into IEPs ties our hands until the annual review. Um, the consultant has provided recent research with us, as well as a different way of looking at articulating the need in a way that provides flexibility, for example, by not calling out a one-to-one or a two-to-one, but rather that the student is supported by a paraprofessional as needed. And that work is taking place now. The requests that are before you for tonight are, as the ones that you got, um, last month, are until the end of June. Um, because this is when this work, we will have the culmination of this work and we'll be able to move forward in a different way come fall. Um, the the reason I feel so strongly about this is that I don't believe it's best, it's the best thing for students. I think that when we encourage dependency, uh, what we should be doing is is really working to increase independence. And, um, I think that, as you have experienced this year and last year, our cha- our needs are constantly changing. These two little ones absolutely legitimately need the the one-to-one support. But our hope is that, over time, that would be reduced, because the student is being more and more successful within the general classroom, where there's also additional support. So I wanted to say that so that you know that we are still, we're not just blindly continuing to ask for people. We are looking at how we can do our work more efficiently, but most importantly, provide kids with the adequate amount of support, um, as opposed to, as opposed to too much. So I say that before you, we ask you to vote on these.
And and one of the things that's not in the motion is the funding source. We talked about that. Uh, there is money available in the salary reserve, uh, to cover two point O FTEs for a brief part of the year.
But that's not in the budget transfers tonight?
No, it's not.
So it'll be in a subsequent one?
There'll be, once we know who they are, when they're gonna start.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, so, sorry about that.
So with respect to the first, um, paraprofessional request, are there any comments or questions? So the recommended, uh, I would seek a motion to approve the addition of one FTE paraprofessional for the recently registered elementary student.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous, and so carries. The next paraprofessional request is, for our consideration, recommendation of the superintendent for an additional one FTE for a paraprofessional to meet the increased needs of a center school student. There's recommended motion before you, are there any comments or questions on the motion? Take a motion to approve the addition of the one FTE paraprofessional to meet the increased needs of the center school student.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries. Next is, um, for our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent to approve an overnight travel request for the robotics team to go to Kentucky. The dates of the trip are April twentieth to April twenty-third.
During April vacation.
Are there any comments or questions on the motion or request?
I was gonna say, it feels like it would be really tough to say no at this point.
No, no setup at all. Um, before I set you up for that, though, um, is that, um, we, we did, Mr. Mr. Keller, um, and I, um, worked with Mr. Scott to ensure that we had access to the program for as many students as as wanted to attend, um, because we understood that not a, not every parent would be able to. We talked about the supervision, I shared with you the background questions that we had. Um, many families are making it into a vacation. Uh, we have our high school student, who I had concern about his supervision, his mom's going. Um, so it it's really been a collaborative effort to make this something that's accessible, because typically, something like this would not be. Um, and so I I felt relatively, um, comfortable setting it up this way, because I knew that they, they had really, um, sought to make sure that that it, that it was something that the team could, um, attend, so. So we seek your pu- approval on that.
So there's a recommended motion before you. Um, I take a motion to approve the overnight travel request for the robotics team to Kentucky from April twentieth to April twenty-third.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes. Yes, unanimous, and so carries.
And then we have our, right, one and only item of old business, which is school committee policy I H A M B and I H A M B E one, sex education, this is our second reading.
I had no further emails on this, did, did you, Mr. Graziano? Or would it have gone to you, the questions on policy? No? Oh, okay.
Um, it would've gone to me.
Oh, I apologize.
And What's that?
No worries, he said.
Okay.
Did you get any other?
I had one question, um, that I sent to you. Mr. Keller, it was a curriculum question.
Okay.
Um, nothing really related to the policy and the procedure, just a curriculum question.
So as we discussed, it it may, the the changes were mainly around notification to ensure that what was written in policy was consistent with practice. And the changes now make it consistent with what's happening in our practice, which is, I think, actually giving parents better notification than even our policy was requiring.
There's a recommended motion before you to adopt policy I H A M B and I H A M B dash E one as amended. I'd seek a, someone to make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries. Is no one here for public comment? Maybe because we're like breathing along and it
There's just no way they would have expected public comment to be here now.
Do you want to sit here for an hour in case somebody wants to come down?
I think that's definitely the right thing to do.
Now, we have, I'd like consensus, Dr. McLeod.
Superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve the operating budget and other funds warrant number sixteen dash zero four four in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy dollars eighteen cents. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve the Elmwood School Student Activities Warrant number sixteen dash zero four six in the amount of two thousand five hundred seventy dollars. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve the middle school student activities warrant number sixteen dash zero four seven in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars ninety cents. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve the minutes of the special school committee meetings of April ninth, two thousand fifteen, and December tenth, two thousand fifteen, as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meetings of May twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, June eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, October twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, and December third, two thousand fifteen, as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve nine hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty cents from General Mills Box Tops for Education Program and two hundred and forty-four dollars from the HPTA Spearware Fundraiser be placed in the Hopkins School Gift Account, as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends the school committee vote to approve two thousand from the, two thousand dollars from the Skies the Limit fundraiser and one thousand three hundred and nine dollars eighty-five cents from Target's Take Charge of Education Program to be placed in the middle school gift account, as indicated in the agenda materials. There was one amendment made to the minutes of December tenth?
Yes, but there was just a one in front of Mr. Dumas' name.
And it was, that has been made, so before it is posted, it has been corrected.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries. We'll say before we move, um, I seek a motion for executive session. We did receive other communications with respect to meeting minutes. And, um, the the way we responded was, one, to get it to bunch on the agenda today, but also to, um, submit those to the person who requested them in draft form. And in looking at the MGL, um, I'm not sure what pa- past practice has been, but it appears that even when the school committee appears at another board's meeting or at town meeting, we don't have to call, we can post it, because we're all gonna be there and there might be deliberation. But to the extent there isn't deliberation, everything we say is said at that public meeting that belongs to someone else, we don't have to do minutes. Um, so I don't know if anyone has comments or questions about that, but I looked it up and then I spoke with the, um, the MASC just to make sure I was on the right path. So now I would seek a motion to move into executive session to conduct a level three grievance hearing under the teachers' collective bargaining agreement. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do a roll call.
Second.
A motion, okay. Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano. Ms. Birchman?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Yes.
And I M S and Ms. Nickerson is absent.
Do we need to say we won't be returning? We'll return just for the
We won't return to TV.
Oh, we will?
So we'll return to do next meetings, but, I I mean, to adjourn. Um, but our next meetings are March twenty-fourth, April seventh, and April twenty-eighth. Thank you.